Okay, good morning everyone. The time is 9:34 a.m. Thank you for your patience. We had a quick power outage here in the public hearing room, so we're all set to go and we're streaming live. Today is Tuesday, August the 12th, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Erica, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Malika.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoratio. Commissioner Baca.
Here.
So if everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Just need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved, and I'll press the button when it shows up.
I'll second when the button shows up.
I think we'll need to do a voice vote today.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Pinter.
Yes.
Commissioner Malika.
Yes.
Commissioner Odoratio. Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Baca.
Yes. So the motion passes five to zero. We're on to awards and presentations. So today we are pleased to award $16,169,666.78 to applicants from our Adams County Open Space Sales Tax Grant Program. To begin, we'd like to approve our resolution for our open space sales tax.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
And the motion passes five to zero, so thank you to the board. So the Open Space Advisory Board reviewed 27 grant applications for this grant cycle. Following the recommendations of the advisory board, the Board of County Commissioners is awarding funding for all 27 projects this morning. The funding awarded today will support the renovations and improvements to existing parks throughout the county, a new park in the city of Brighton, trail extensions and improvements, a Korean War memorial at General's Park in Aurora. And I see many of our applicants here with us this morning, and we'll get to them in just a moment. The success of this program lies in the hands of our Open Space Advisory Board members. They volunteer their time to review applications, attend presentation meetings, and recommend funding for projects that have great benefits to Adams County residents. Did see a couple of our advisory members. If you're here in the audience, if you could please stand to be recognized. The advisory board members are Mark Humbert, Mark Stickell, Mark Voland, Rolando Malgoza, Jason Mackel Downey, and George Mizotti. Thank you so much for your service. In the interest of time today, we're going to present all awards in front of the dais, so please come forward when we announce your project. We will take a large group photo at the end, and if anyone wants individual project photos, you can meet with our photographer afterwards. So we're gonna go ahead and reposition. While we do that, this funding has been approved by the taxpayers of Adams County. Several iterations over the last 20, 25 years have come forward. They have all been approved by the board or by the taxpayers of Adams County. That's what creates this funding source, so we can have these beautiful projects around Adams County. So at this time, we can go down in front. I think I'm up first, okay. Thank you all for being here. As our Chair Baca just said, this is dedicated funding that the taxpayers have voted on. I think the most recent renewal was 2020, looking at Commissioner Odoratio, because he and I worked hard on that one. So in these times that you can have hardship, it's really nice to have some sales tax funding that is dedicated to community investment and renewal, and these projects will build a lot of respite and joy for our communities. So I'm so excited to start with my hometown, city of Westminster. Our first three awards go to the city of Westminster. They're being recognized with, they're being awarded a grant for the amount of $1.4 million for the municipal court park project, $1.5 million for Bishop Square Park improvements, and a mini grant of $20,845 for the open space equipment electrification project. So if you're here from Westminster, come on down and start on this side and grab your certificate, and then come through and we'll do all the handshaking and congratulating. Congratulations, city of Westminster. We'd love to do an individual picture.
Yeah, we'll do.
If you guys would share. Yeah, if you just hop. We'll do an individual and a group.
Deal.
Yep. Oh yeah. Come on, Gabe. This is not the time to be shy, Gabe.
Okay, the next three grand awards go to the city of Thornton. First, Adams County Open Space Sales Tax Program is awarding funding in the amount of $700, over $700,000 for Big Dry Creek Trailhead design and underpass construction. Second, over $800,000 for Wise Water at Brandon Place Park. And third, $25,000 for their drone pilot program. Representatives from Thornton, please come on down.
Yep. If you could, yeah, if you could each hold one, that'd be fantastic. Thank you so much. The next awards go to the town of Bennett. First, $2,323,581.40 for the Kiowa Creek Trail and multimodal improvements. And second, $25,000 for the Troop Park Food Truck Plaza. And I had a page term, excuse me. And representatives from the town of Bennett, please come forward to accept your awards. We definitely gotta get baby. Babies in the front. My goodness. She is so cute. Ozette, Ozette, over here. Ozette, Ozette. Hey. Okay, my turn really quick. Over here. Ozette, over here. Okay. All right, next up, we have the UN Heritage for Korean War was sponsored by the city of Aurora to build the Korean War Memorial at the city of Aurora's General Park. This grant is for $635,000. Please come forward to accept your first ever grant award for this program. Yes, and if you'll just look over at Wes.
And then we get one with the participants, one of the awardees.
Oh, is this another one?
No, that's.
Oh, that's yours? Okay. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, the next award is two awards go to the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership. The first award is for $273,947.05 for environmental education, and the second award is $224,930 for the Wetland Park Destination. So please come forward to accept your award. Yep, just look at Wes.
And on three here, one, two, three.
Our next award is to the Highland Hills Parks and Rec District. They are being awarded three open space grants. The first grant is $840,000 for Carston Camish Park Plan Implementation. The next is for Learn to Swim Pool Improvements in the amount of $910,000. And a last, a mini grant for $25,000 for Fitness Center Pickle Court Design. At pickleball court.
Perfect. All right, on three, one, two, three.
All right, the Highlight Canal Conservancy Group is being awarded almost $200,000 for a conservation easement stewardship. Please come on down to accept your award. Please come on down to accept your award.
Perfect. All right. On three, one, two, three, and one more.
The next three awards are for Commerce City. The first award is for $749,999 for the Pioneer Park Improvements Project. Second, $50,000 for Second Creek Trail Connections Planning. And last, a mini grant for interpretive signage at C A L U Park and Second Creek Trail in the amount of $5,750. Commerce City Representatives, please come to forward to accept your award. Yep, gotta get a picture.
All right, perfect.
Yep.
Everybody looking at me on three, one, two, three. One more. Perfect.
All right, I'm excited to announce the next one. This is for the city of Northland. They are being awarded a mini grant in the amount of $25,000 for the Northwest Open Space Ball Field Shade Project, $290,000 for the Huron Crossing Park Safety Project, $560,000 for, hold on. Okay, for the Festival Lawn Shade Structure and Public Art Project. Northland Representatives in the house, come back down.
We'll squeeze everybody in there. Get everybody capable this way.
I'm sorry, I'm shorter than you. And if everybody could look over here at Wes. Okay, our next award is for the city of Brighton. They're being awarded $3 million for the Park Recplex Phase One Community Park Project and $1,050,000 for the Water Park Tower Connectivity and Parking Lot. So please come forward, the city of Brighton.
Good. All righty, one, two, three, more.
Bennett Parks and Rec District is being awarded two grants totaling $887,500 for weight room renovations. Please come forward to accept your awards, town of Bennett.
Perfect.
We're just looking at us.
On three here, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Perfect.
Adams County is being awarded a grant in the amount of $231,000 for Riverdale Regional Park Maintenance Enhancements and $210,000 for Riverdale Regional Park Trail Improvements. Come on down, Adams County.
All righty. And on three here, one, two, three. Perfect.
We need to do one, one big group.
Big group. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so thank you to all of our, all of our participant awardees. We're very pleased to be able to provide these funds. Um, so let's all assemble. If you can all come down with your awards, we are gonna assemble here and we're gonna look up, up top here. So come on down. Okay. Ready, Erica? All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is public comment. So we're gonna start with citizen communication. And Erica, um, has anyone signed up this morning for public comment?
Chair, we do have about 16 people signed up this morning regarding TANF and funding.
Great.
The first person is Veronica Perez.
If you can please come down to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Oh, it's right in front of the microphone.
Oh, and then I just.
Once you start.
Oh, sweet. Okay, cool.
Esteemed county commissioners, my name is Veronica Betis. I'm the CEO of Growing Home, a community-based nonprofit with over 25 years of providing direct services to people in Adams County. We have the largest choice shopping food pantry in the city of Westminster and surrounding areas. We have an award-winning, blue-ribbon parenting education program. We offer collaborative coaching to help provide economic growth goals to our community members. And just until a few weeks ago, we provided a housing stability program that prevented hundreds of Adams County residents and children from losing their homes. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of those families and those children that we can no longer prevent from becoming homeless. We are asking you to restore our contracts and other organizations like ours so that we can continue to provide these critical services to families that are immediate, uh, piece of becoming homeless. Growing Home's Housing Stability Program has offered rental assistance, utility, and mortgage assistance to income-qualified households and case management for long-term housing stability. For the past three years, the program served nearly 400 Adams County households with over 1,500 people, including 861 children. 69% of those households remained stably housed and saw their housing burden cost reduced after exiting our program. This program was funded through the county's TANF allocation and had been, had been in place for many years. But earlier this year, when our contract came up for renewal, we heard nothing from the county for weeks. Our communications went unanswered, and until days before the contract was up for renewal, did we hear that the county would no longer be renewing housing contracts. Now multiply all those numbers by dozens, because we have other organizations that also provide these critical services to our residents. Both this lack of dialogue and terminating those contracts directly contradict the recommendations that are in your own county's report addressing homelessness that was released just this April. This is not what is happening in other jurisdictions. All the other surrounding counties continue to distribute their TANF funds. Adams County is the outlier. We have not only lost funding for the assistance, but we've also lost critical infrastructure. And we are asking that you restore this funding for rental and mortgage assistance, even if you need to do it through general funds. We also ask that you get in dialogue with us, the services that provide these critical needs to our community and people with lived experience, so we can help support these housing strategies for those groups that are in crisis. And third, we ask the county to move quickly. Each day that passes, it is harder for us to reconstitute this programmatic infrastructure that has been lost, so time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Ming Montoya.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ming Montoya Tang, and I am a resident of Adams County for 17 years. I am a privileged CEO and an entrepreneur of an HR and operations business. And I'm here today not just as a community member, but someone who knows how much housing stability shapes lives across generations. I'm urging you for three critical actions. First, fund rental and mortgage assistance programs that house the county. Second, engage directly with people with lived experience with social service providers who are on the front lines of this crisis every day, the people who are the hardworking backbone of our community. Third, act swiftly to reinstate these programs before more families fall through the cracks, because I consider myself one of the lucky ones. I was born into a family of hardworking immigrants who already had the support of a tight-knit community. But that wasn't by accident, it was generational. My father grew up in government housing in Hong Kong, which gave his family the stability to scrape by together enough to have funds to send him to school. He was lucky. He later met my mother, who was lucky enough to be raised in the projects in New York, where there was enough structure and support to push through the challenges of poverty. She was lucky to escape a mountain landslide that killed the entire village that was opposite her village on the hill. There was no running water, no electricity, and funded affordable housing was her family's greatest generational stroke of luck. I grew up what luck, look, I grew up watching what luck made possible, but I also grew up watching what happened to those who didn't find their luck. I watched families in our community, other friends, neighbors, Americans, work tirelessly behind the mask of doing, of being the model minority, hidden from social safety nets because they were supposed to be doing fine. I watched friends who ran out of luck when their child was diagnosed with cancer. They sold everything. They bartered, picked up after shifts, reached out for anybody who could help, but still they couldn't make rent. So how can we look at these families and say, we can't help? How can we let fall through those cracks those who give everything and simply don't have luck on their side? Because housing shouldn't be about luck. Access to a stable home is not just about shelter, it is the foundation for everything else. In Maslow's hierarchy of needs, physical needs are the base pyramid that supports the well-being and social mobility of humans. Stable housing means the difference between keeping or not keeping a job, raising a children who know their own address, who have a school district and a sense of community. Without it, the entire system collapses, not just for the individuals, but for all of us. We know both from lived experience and economic data that it is far more cost-effective to keep people housed than it is to respond once they fall into crisis, whether it's through emergency services, hospitalization, or homelessness interventions. So today, I return to the heart of my message. Please fund rental and mortgage assistance programs across the county. Sit down with those who have lived housing through housing insecurity and the providers who support them. We can be your resource. Move quickly, because we don't have time to waste and people are falling through the cracks every day. So thank you for your time and your commitment to serving all residents of Adams County, not just the lucky ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Bev Bishop.
Good morning, county commissioners. I'm Bev Bishop, and I have lived in the Adams County portion of Westminster since 1983. I've been retired now for 19 years. I've been a community volunteer and active with both the city of Westminster and the county, serving on various governmental and nonprofit boards and committees. My ask for you today are three things. Number one, find a way to fund rental and mortgage assistance programs across the county. Two, dialogue with people who have lived experience and with social service providers who are strategizing on these topics every day. And three, move quickly to restore these programs. Now you may wonder, what could somebody who has owned and lived in the same house for 42 years possibly know about housing problems? Although I've not experienced a housing crisis myself, I have interacted with and gotten to know many people who have. During my retirement years, I volunteered with several nonprofits doing things such as talking to homeless people and cleaning out their mobile shower stalls, helping for over 10 years at a local food pantry, participating in renters' rights activities, and most recently, acting as a volunteer family advocate with the IRC for two families living in Adams County. Both of these families are getting by, although it's extremely hard, especially when the sole breadwinners in both cases work the midnight shift at places that pay them very little. Even though medical conditions have been ongoing for both of these families, the moms make education a priority for themselves and their children. They work hard to make sure their families are well-fed. They're able to focus on these parts of life because they currently have good, stable housing. I've become quite attached to my two extended families. I don't wanna imagine what would happen if due to a job loss or some additional metal, medical crisis, they could not pay the rent. I wanna believe that here in Adams County, we can ensure that hard-working families have somewhere to turn so that they don't end up out on the streets. Housing does need to be first. So again, I have my three asks for you. Please find some way to fund rental assistance programs and mortgage assistance programs. Talk with people like these who are involved in the daily struggle. And I'd love to tell each of you more about my two families. Please try to come up with some kind of a plan. Please try to come up with some kind of a plan quickly before things are going to get much, much worse.
Thank you so much. Erica?
Mary Beth Pascal.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you in support of the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families program funding. When I retired a few years ago, I wanted to spend my free time volunteering with an organization that I felt truly made a difference in the lives of people in need. It was Growing Home that resonated with me because Growing Home is committed to helping people in need to help themselves. To put my thoughts into context, please allow me to share a little about myself. I grew up in Pittsburgh. My father built our house for six thousand dollars, and he worked hard and long hours in the steel industry to support our family. But he was often laid off for three months at a time. My parents' first concern was to pay the mortgage and the utility bills so they would not lose the house. Anything that was left over could be used for other things such as food for our family. I am not exaggerating any of this. I lived it. I remember opening the refrigerator and finding nothing but a stick of Olio. I ate the Olio for lunch and for dinner. In high school, I got on the school bus without eating anything for breakfast, and I had no money for lunch. So my friend shared a tin of Sucre throat lozengers with me. They helped my stomach from rumbling during class, and they also became my lunch. Why am I sharing this? Because I know firsthand how good families can struggle, and that as hard as they may work and try, they may need a helping hand. This is where Growing Homes Utility and Mortgage Rental Assistance Program, which is funded through TAMP, comes in. This program not only helps participants with their immediate needs, but it also helps them to develop long-term plans for stable and affordable housing. These preventative measures offer long-term benefits for individuals and families, and also for their community. Last year, eighty-six percent of households successfully completed the program at Growing Home. Eighty-six percent. That's huge. Compare that with the cost of supporting the needs of an unhoused family. May I close with admitting that I was devastated when I learned that TAMP funding was no longer available. These programs are critical to helping families in need, and I only wish they had been available when I was growing up and hungry. I sincerely thank you for your time and for allowing me to share my thoughts and experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Erica?
Ricky, I apologize, I'm not sure of the last name.
Thank you for your time. I've been a-
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Ricky Mertes.
Okay, thank you.
I've been an Adams County resident, attending Leroy Drive Elementary School in North Glen, here on junior high, and graduating from North Glen High School. Upon graduating from North Glen High School, I went to the Marine Corps. I returned home, started raising a family. Raised my family in Westminster. I've had many ups and downs through my life, divorces and other things. I've been down, and I've been up. It's the assistance you get when you're down that helps you get back up. With what Growing Home provides to the people of the community, first off, hungry bellies don't get back up. Hungry bellies stay down, and they get depressed. So the food assistance that's given by Growing Home is very important. I also have had times when I've been property manager and managed properties with rents. During the COVID crisis, we even used Maker Housing to get assistance. One thing that was missing with Maker Housing, when we were getting that assistance, at least that I saw from the tenants I was managing, was that they weren't getting any assistance with budgeting and how to stay on track. Growing Home has a plan that helps that. Keeps these people on track when they're getting the housing assistance. That is very important. The budgeting part and keeping them on track, that keeps them from falling back. When I started getting with Growing Home, I was down. Some friends of mine suggested Growing Home. I went there, got there at nine o'clock in the morning. I was thirty-seventh in line for them to open the doors for food for people at ten o'clock. Another week I got there, had truck problems, ended up taking the bus. It took me almost two hours to get there. I got there, I was forty-fifth in line. That's lucky, because they cut it off at forty-five. The worst part about it was that I had to tell everybody behind me that they were closed for the day. Soon after that, we were told that they had lost funding, and that they were going to cut from four days a week of food distribution to three. They also asked, because we've lost funding, we also have lost employees. So we need volunteers. That was time for me to volunteer. I'm there four days a week, volunteering to help this food pantry, because it is important for our community. We need to serve the people. Food is one of the most important things that we have. It is the building block for every bit of life. From that, people can go forward. They can get housing, but we have to have the food side first.
Thank you, Ricky. You're at time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Erica, who do you have next on the list?
Denise Granio.
Good morning. My name is Denise Perunda Granio. I work at Growing Home as a community organizing program, but I'm also speaking in an individual capacity as a resident of Adams County. I myself have experienced homelessness. I remember being in the parking lot of McDonald's, having to do my finals and having to do my homework in the middle of it, and having to debate whether or not I should pay my credit card or pay the one meal I was going to have a week. And I still live through all of that trauma, and I still have that existential crisis when I have to pay my bills and have to return to that end question of food or credit card. And I am not the only one who does this. I know many people in our social service organization like Growing Home oftentimes end up having to debate whether or not they should pay for food or medicine or their month, and they forego that food or medicine. So cutting the county's rental and mortgage assistance programs will have dire consequences on many people's lives. And I remember there is a program like these that could help us in a lifetime, that could help us manage ourselves and could have been that lifeline we all needed. So at this time, when the federal funding level is being cut for critical housing services, we need our counties and municipalities to be strategic when they use of their funds. The National Alliance of the Homelessness Reports that providing process to housing generally results in cost-saving. People who are housed are less likely to use emergency services, like hospitals, jails, and emergency shelters, as opposed to those who are unhoused. And one study even showed that there is an average cost of savings on emergency services of thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty-five per person housed over the course of two years. And they also warned that underinvestment in deeply affordable housing and severely underfunded programs have led to inequitable access opportunity, which have led to more folks being unhoused. So it is now that we ask to use those resources that we have to keep families housed, like rental assistance programs. It is these exact strategies that are reflected in the report your own staff in April wrote that is called "Addressing Homelessness in Adams County: Current Efforts and the Next Steps." The county invested significant resources to produce this report, so it begs the question, why is these recommendations are not being followed? If you see on page fifty-seven, there is a quote that says, "Numerous people mentioned that there are not enough people doing the work to support homelessness prevention and intervention efforts." Yet, this is exactly what Growing Home and other organizations are doing until the county cuts our funds. So it is at this time that I ask that the county, that, sorry, that we have county rental assistance mortgage for our programs, that we engage in genuine dialogue with those who are experts and have lived experiences, and that we move quickly to further prevent loss for critical social services infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Erica, who do we have next?
Lily Captain.
Hi, my name is Lily Captain, and I work for Almost Home, which is located in Brighton, but we serve all of Adams County, and I'm our program director. I'm here today to ask you to continue funding sheltering and eviction prevention programs across the county, to include the voices of people with lived experiences and social service providers in your strategic planning, and to restore affected programs quickly. I'm going to focus on the three programs that have been impacted by the cut in TANF funding: our Family Shelter, Respite Housing Program, and Housing Stability Program. I also have a one-page fact sheet for all of you that goes over all of our high-level data from our last fiscal year, which ended on June thirtieth. While I share the data, I urge you to remember that these numbers represent real people and real lives that have been impacted by the work that we do here at Almost Home. In our Family Shelter and Respite Housing Program, we provide housing case management to help people with self-sustainability, along with move-in cost assistance and sheltering. In our Housing Stability Program, we offer one-time rental, mortgage, or utility assistance along with housing case management. We operate the only family shelter in all of Adams County. At any given time, we have over two hundred families on our waitlist. Last year, we sheltered sixty-nine families, and two-thirds of them were able to exit into permanent housing. Without replacement funds, we would not be able to provide move-in cost assistance, and I fear that many of our families would not be able to achieve permanent housing or self-sustainability. In our Respite Housing Program, we sheltered over fifty households, and over forty of them were families with children. Ninety-three percent of those families exited into permanent housing. In our Housing Stability Program, we get usually about three hundred applications a month for rental, mortgage, and utility assistance. We kept five hundred and forty-eight households housed with their utilities turned on last year, and a hundred and fifty-five of them were families with children who we funded through TANF. Ninety-eight percent of respondents in that program were still housed after ninety days. So as you can see, all of these programs really work to keep people housed and house them. Again, I'm asking you to continue funding sheltering and eviction prevention programs across the county, to include voices of lived experience and social service providers in your strategic planning, and to restore affected programs quickly. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us and for working on a solution that focuses on Adams County families.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Lily.
Paquin Apia.
Good morning. Thank you for having us, and thank you for listening to us. My name is Paquin. I have lived in Adams County for over twenty years, and I have had the privilege of working with Almost Home now for about two. During that time, I have learned about the man that we see on the corner at Walmart ever so often, the folks that are outside in wheelchairs and Safeway so often. I have learned that help is needed, not just through Almost Home's program, but collectively throughout the community. When I sit at a chair and I listen to people's stories, and they tell me what's going on, and they ask me for resources, and I have to look at them honestly and say, "No, can't help you." Have to look at them and say, "No, that program is no longer in existence because of funding." I understand budgeting, and I understand the the parts of the community and trying to make sure everything is equally leveled out and everyone is receiving assistance. But I'm appealing to the folks on the corner, and for the folks on the corner. They need the funding through TANF to help them. If I may, I'd like to share a couple of examples. The older gentleman who comes in, whose mother has passed, and she has a reverse mortgage. He is a senior himself, and nowhere to go, because they've only given him fourteen days, and yet we have no resources to help him move anywhere. The father who has three children and wife stays home because of the cost of childcare, works two jobs, and one job is now gone. He needs resources. The single parent who's trying to juggle several jobs, daycare for a little one, older ones who also need support. She also, or he, in this time and frame, needs assistance as well. Can't pay the rent because I paid a medical bill. Can't pay the rent because diapers are now forty dollars a box. I thank you for your time. I thank you for considering the needs that these funds help with the folks in our community. Please consider keeping our TANF funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Nancy Contanzano.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for listening to us. I'm Nancy Contanzano. I've lived in Brighton for seventeen years. I've worked here for ten, and for the last three, I've been a case manager at Almost Home. I'm a housing stability case manager, actually the lead now. And I'm here to plead with you today to fund rental and mortgage assistance programs across the county, to quickly restore our current programs, and to join the dialogue to strategize around housing stability in Adams County. So working for an agency that provides emergency rental assistance and mortgage, I have some people that I represent, and I want to share a little bit of their story with you. These are just the reasons that some people applied for rental assistance or mortgage. Car repairs for a new used car cost seven thousand dollars. They've been trying to catch up, but they always are behind on the rent a little. If they needed the car, they would have lost their jobs. She took F M L A so that she could do chemo for three months, but the pay cut left her short on the rent. The cancer didn't come back, thank goodness, and she went back to work. He got laid off of his job for fifteen years because the rules changed. His wife was disabled but continued to work part-time while he went to school to get his CDL. Because we helped with the rent, they could afford the medication and the driving test. These examples that I give were all clients of mine who were able to pay the rent the next month. These examples that I give were all clients of mine who were able to pay the rent the next month. And also to stay in housing for ninety days after that. Because we could help out their housing emergency, they were able to get back on their feet. Our help relieves the stress so that people can heal and find a new job. This kind of help matters. It keeps families from becoming homeless. Well, I have another story for you. When I was a young mother, I didn't have family support. I left a very violent relationship and I walked away from my home with nothing but my children and some backpacks. It was not ever easy. I worked hard and I really had a lot of barriers to overcome. It took me ten years to be able to pay the bills. Um, I had to take a second job just to pay for the babysitter and I made thirty-five dollars too much for food stamps. Anyway, I definitely used emergency medical or emergency rental assistance during those years. It saved us from losing our home and from becoming homeless. It's gave us stability. And now my children are homeowners and college graduates and we've broken a cycle of abuse and poverty in our family. Funding emergency rental assistance, mortgage assistance, assistance for families who have. The income to pay rent but not enough to move in and for the only family shelter in Adams County is social justice. Right now, I have, my ask is also an offer. Please fund rental and mortgage assistance programs across the county in whatever way you can do that. More, move quickly to restore these funds for the rest of the funding year. Then, before the next year, come talk with us. The few people here who are testifying represent a larger network of service providers, advocates. People with lived experience and community members who benefit from programs like this, your constituents. Let's make a meeting and work together to find innovative and affordable housing solutions for Adams County. Thank you all.
Thank you Nancy.
Time and consideration.
Yes. Erica.
Michaelina Lee.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michaelina Lee. And I'm an Adam Ca- Adams County resident and I've been here, um, for maybe four and a half years. Um, I'm happily employed at Almost Home and I am the Respite Housing Coordinator there, which I enjoy. Um, and I'm also here not only on behalf of, um, advocating for TANF funding to be restored. But I'm also here to read, uh, one of our client stories. This client shared this with us, please. My husband had two heart attacks last year and our family ended up getting evicted. After getting evicted, we only had my income. It was extremely hard to get back on our feet. One whole paycheck would end up just paying for a room for a week. It was extremely hard to save money being in that rough situation. We tried to make it the best we could. It felt like there was no way out, but giving up just wasn't an option. I was calling everywhere to see where we could get help. Everything changed from the moment we went to the crossroads for a motel sh- motel voucher. And to, they provided us with fast support. They got us a month in the motel room and we met with Jenna every week for progress checks. And to let us know she was there to assist in any way and she did. Honestly, everything has been so helpful. The help to get us into an apartment, paying for deposit and first month's rent. And also providing new beds. Almost Home has provided nothing but a life-changing experience. To get us stable and we couldn't be more thankful. And that's one of the stories that a client has shared with us about the assistance that they received that helped their family. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Erica, who do you have next?
Delaney Lee.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Delaney Coe and I'm the Deputy Director at Almost Home. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for listening today. I've talked with many of you over the past few weeks and know that you have been hearing us and have been advocating for us. I know you're not in an easy position balancing a budget that's facing threats from every direction like many of us. This is why we're here today, asking for dialogue to chart a path forward together. Following the recommendations of Adams County's own report and so much of the evidence-based research that we, we know works in our community. It's more important than ever to be in communication, work with service providers, with residents who have lived a housing crisis themselves. As you make these critical decisions about future funding in our county. We're asking you to fund Almost Home and our partners' housing contracts at sufficient levels. To ensure these housing stability and shelter programs continue to be available in our community and to involve community in that decision. In a world where medical and food benefits are being cut, it is in our power to ensure that people do not also lose their housing. Adams County residents are telling us in every survey and poll that housing ranks as near or at the top of their concerns. From the Quality of Life Report to the Community Health Assessment. Looking at population level data, this makes sense. Fifty-two percent, over half of Adams County renters are se- are housing cost burdened. Half of those are severely housing cost burdened. That means a majority of renting constituents could end up needing our services. There were eight thousand six hundred and seventy-six evictions filed last year, the highest on record. This is a housing crisis. Residents' quality of life and health are more affected by housing than any other factor. And families are counting on this board to address this issue so that they can thrive. Growing Home, Family Tree, Almost Home's programs form the cornerstone of effective solutions in Adams County. You've heard from my colleagues the impact and importance of each dollar that has been funded historically through these TANF contracts. These programs work and families suffer when they aren't able to access them. I hope for a future where we're here strategizing how to increase access rather than fighting to keep these programs alive. It has taken years to build Almost Home's infrastructure to serve this many people this effectively. We've thoughtfully developed every position, hired every person on this team for their role. As many of you probably know, it takes time to develop a solid team and this would not return overnight if we were even able to find funding down the road. It's important the continuation. This kind of impact takes consistency. Programs funded by our TANF contracts for years have been effective at mitigating the impacts of devastating trends in employment and housing in this county. Now that we have reached this level of efficacy, we're asking for three things. Continued investment, collaborative planning. And timely action from this Board of County Commissioners to make it through this time of scarcity without abandoning our most vulnerable families. I'll end with a quick story of a family who would be facing a different outcome if it weren't for TANF funding. This family, um, had a newborn baby, received a stage-three diagnosis for her boyfriend. And due to his help, he was no longer able to return to work. Um, she felt unable to return because she had to care for her child and her boyfriend. With no income, they had no way to pay their rent. On the brink of eviction, Jennifer reached out to Almost Home, applied for rental assistance. And was able to get the resources they needed to get caught up on rent, focus on their health, and get back to work. I urge you to talk to and consider residents like this mother as you determine the future of these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you Delaney.
Good morning. My name is Ellie Baker and I'm speaking on behalf of Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools regarding the essential funding and support through Almost Home. The beauty of schools is that for so many families, they are a safe, neutral place. A place where children are fed, cared for, and nurtured by adults dedicated to helping them thrive. Many families have come to see schools as more than learning environments. They are also trusted guides to essential resources and outside support. As a wraparound facilitator, I provide intensive case management for the entire family to build self-sufficiency and stability. Every day I meet families facing housing crisis. Parents struggling to pay rent, families sleeping in their cars. Tenants needing mediation with unsafe landlords. And those trapped in the exhausting cycles of moving from motel to motel just to have a safe place to sleep. Whenever families have asked me, what can I do? I have directed them to Almost Home. Month after month, Almost Home has provided life-changing support to my families. Thanks to their programs, more than twenty of my families have moved from chronic homelessness to stability. Their family shelter provided a safe place, um, for up to sixty days during immediately, immediate crisis. The Move-In Ready Program helps families break the paycheck-to-paycheck cycle by providing financial assistance for housing deposits. The Respite Program offers temporary hotel stays for families awaiting new housing. While their previous overflow program ensured that no family is left without shelter during transitional periods. Helping them secure employment, vital documents, and access to affordable housing. Nearly all of the families that have completed Almost Home programs have remained stable, even after years of homelessness. This stability means that children can stay in schools and feel safe, maintain friendships, and continue learning with teachers who deeply care for them. I'd like to finish with a story to showcase the true impact of Almost Home's work. Nine months ago, a single mom and her five daughters stopped by a food bank run at my school at five P M. that night. The mother reported a few weeks ago that she had left an abusive relationship in the middle of the night and she and her five children were sleeping in their car. They had nowhere to turn and was overwhelmed at the idea of turning for help and didn't know who to ask. Immediately, I knew the family shelter at Almost Home was going to be their place of refuge. With the weather turning, I knew we had to create a plan fast so they didn't have to sleep another sleepless night in a parking lot. Within the hour, the city of Westminster was able to provide a motel for the whole family to give us time to finalize plans to transition into the shelter. Within a matter of days, Almost Home had the whole family settled and moved in. I'll never forget the phone call I got from mom on their second day. Mom cried stating she had never felt safer and more supported in her life. Throughout this time, the children began to flourish in school. Attendance increased, grades went up, and I saw their social relationships improve. After sixty days, the family transitioned into one more transitional program while they awaited their permanent housing. Mom will say that it is because of Almost Home that they are safe and stable for the first time in years. These programs are not just helpful, they are vital to ensuring families flourish. Continued funding is essential to keep these life-changing supports in place for our families in Adams County. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, who do you have, who do you have on the list?
Liesel Reed.
Good morning. My name is Liesel Reed and I'm a resident of Brighton. I lead the Student and Family Outreach Program for Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools. In Adams Twelve, every school year, we serve over, well over two thousand students who are experiencing homelessness. That is about six percent of our student population. And there are very few community resources to support these families. But amid the deficit of resources is a lifeline and that lifeline is Almost Home. Through our long partnership with Almost Home, thousands of students and their families have received, received support. Just last school year, one hundred-plus families received some type of housing resource through Almost Home. And twenty-plus families were housed through Almost Home. The year prior, due to our in-house partnership with Almost Home. We were able to provide housing support to over one hundred Adams Twelve students. But Almost Home and its other community, um, partners are not just about housing. They provide links to employment, they provide vital documents. They provide food security and connection to other community resources. In education, we know that students who receive wraparound support have improved attendance, which is a priority for Adams County. And with housing support, uh, we have seen chronic absenteeism drop from almost seventy percent. Three years ago to forty-nine percent in the past school year. And we have also seen the highest graduation rate for students who are experiencing homelessness in Adams Twelve history. If we lose Almost Home, we will lose a vibrant and vital part of our community. And Adams County students and families will bear the brunt of this loss. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Erica, who else?
Olga Lopez.
Good morning. My name is Olga Lopez and I'm the Director of Programs at Growing Home. I'm speaking in a personal capacity as one of your constituents who has lived in Adams County for my entire life. I've worked for Growing Home for eighteen years. Um, I started the Parent as Teachers Program and I managed the program. But I was also a parent educator who went into the homes of the families to work one-on-one with parents with small children to help get their children's school ready. Now I oversee all program, programs, including our Parents as Teachers, Food Pantry, our Coaching Program, and our Housing Stability Programs. Every day I see families coming through our doors desperate because they don't know how they're going to afford rent, gas, food, energy bills, and medicines. While everything is getting more expensive, their paychecks are staying the same. And year after year, when we survey our families, the number one issue they name is housing. When children don't have a steady place to lay their heads at night, their performance in school suffers. Their health suffers, they experience higher rates of depression and anxiety, and they struggle in social settings. Infants and families experiencing homelessness are more likely to develop physical health problems, including respiratory problems. And low birth weight and have significantly more E R visits. Children's Health Watch found using methods consistent with the Congressional Budget Office that roughly ten point two million children. And their families living in unstable housing incurred eight billion dollars nationally in avoidable, unavoidable healthcare and education costs. In just one calendar year. Rental assistance programs are not new, unknown, or experimental. These are evidence-based programs that get real results that Adams County has been funding for decades and I know because I've been around for that long. I've seen families that have come to us fully in crisis get stabilized and back on their feet within weeks because of these programs. They work. Rental and mortgage assistance programs like ours are a money saver for the county because they prevent people from becoming unhoused in the first place. And smaller amounts of money for this kind of assistance can help a much larger quantity of people, so we have three asks. First, provide funding for our rental assistance program across the county. Second, be in dialogue with subject matter experts like your social service providers and people who've experienced housing insecurity about that strategy, strategy. We know that there is limited pot of money to spend, so the county must be extremely strategic with what it prioritizes and dialogue is necessary. And don't just take it from us. Listen to your constituents, to what they're saying in municipal housing needs assessments, in the public forums. These voices are out there for you to rely upon. We're willing to collaborate and provide support to you. Finally, we ask that you move quickly on this. Most of our organizations have had to furlough staff that ran these programs. And every day more of them are finding other positions in neighboring counties or outside the nonprofit sector entirely. Every day you delay, that infrastructure deteriorates a little more and as a constituent, I'm telling you, we need to act quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erica, who else do you have listed?
Mavari Avita.
Okay, and can you name the next speaker as well?
The last person is Kimberly Stack and that's everyone signed up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Marari Avidia and I am a bilingual parent educator. I have been with Growing Home a little under two years and I'm a proud Adams County resident. Today I'm here speaking in an individual capacity to share how Rental Assistance Program has had a profound positive impact in my life. And to describe how critical it is that you fund these programs across the county and to do so as quickly as possible. I'm a survivor of domestic violence. During one of my most difficult times in my life, I found myself. I found myself in urgent need of rental assistance. Without that help, my circumstances would have been drastically different. I might not, I might not have able, been able to stabilize my life, regain my independence. Or get back on my feet financially. It was the rental assistance that I received that enabled me to gain control of my life financially once again. Shortly after receiving assistance, I applied for Parent Educator Precision with Growing Home. The reality is, the longer rental assistance programs are unable, unavailable, I'm sorry, there are unavailable. The longer vulnerable women and children remain trapped in unsafe situations. These programs are not just financial aid. They're lifelines that open the door to safety, stability, and the ability to rebuild a future. Thank you for listening and for recognizing the critical role these programs play in our community.
Thank you so much. And our last speaker today. Kimberly, if you can please state your name and address or name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Kimberly Stack and I have proudly served as a parent educator at Growing Home for the past sixteen months. As a constituent of Adams County for eight years, I'm here to advocate for critical funding in rental and mortgage assistance programs throughout our community. It is imperative that we engage in meaningful conversations with both service providers and individuals who have faced housing instability. To develop strategies that truly address this pressing issue and we must act swiftly. Today, I want to share the story of a family I have worked closely with. The head of the family is now a single mother who grew up in the foster care system lacking a steady family foundation. Motivated by her own childhood experiences, she was committed to being highly involved in her children's lives and chose to be a stay-at-home mom while her partner worked to support them. She has two young children now ages four and one. Sadly, their lives were turned upside down when her partner unexpectedly passed away. With no job experience, no high school diploma, and no family available for support, she relied on a modest survivor's benefit while looking for childcare and working towards her GED. Thanks to Growing Home's Housing Stability Program, she managed to sustain her current living situation and found hope in the opportunity as she enrolled in an adult high school equivalency program aiming to secure a job to care for her children. She had aspirations for a better future. Unfortunately, the situation took a difficult turn. Local budget cuts led to many nonprofits to either scale back or completely cut the programs that were crucial for individuals like her, including the Housing Stability Program at Growing Home. As a result, she lost access to essential resources. She received an eviction notice, her cellphone was shut off, and I have not been able to locate her or her children since. This family had participated in the program, the parenting program, for over a year, holding on the hope for a better future despite the many challenges they faced. This family story is not a unique one. These are the types of families that initiatives like the Housing Stability Program seek to support. The families we assist often find themselves in tough situations through no wrongdoing of their own, whether it's due to unexpected injury, an illness, a death in the family, or changes to employment. These situations could happen to anyone, including you. These families are dedicated to building a better future for their children, but they need the support from programs like those provided by Growing Home. Without access to vital resources like rental and mortgage assistance, we risk leaving them and their children feeling hopeless. We urge you to act promptly to ensure the continuation of these essential programs. As a community, we must come together to uplift our most vulnerable members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, so we're currently under the public comment section of the meeting. Is there anyone else in the room that didn't sign up that would like to come and speak under public comment? Okay, no one else in the room wants to speak under public comment, not seeing anybody. So we're going to move on to the next item, which is elected official communication. So to my commissioners. Anything from the board? I'll start off and then, okay. So under elected official communications, normally is the time for an update, whether it's from the board or any other county elected official that would like to come forward. The time for elected official communications, let me go back just a little bit. Public comment is exactly that, is an opportunity for our public citizens, nonprofit businesses, veterans, first responders, those in community, citizens that would like to come forward and state publicly to the board, whether it's their concern or other items that are on their mind. It is not an opportunity for open dialogue between the public and also the Board of County Commissioners. So, under elected official communication, we do have the opportunity for the elected officials, the Board of County Commissioners, to pick up anything in public comment, to comment about it, to make a statement. At this time, I would like to do that. I heard in the room today was Growing Home and Almost Home. Also received emails from folks at respective nonprofits. I want to thank you very much for your time for being here this morning and stating the concern of your clients so eloquently and with such compassion for being such good stewards of taking care of one another, not only in your nonprofit, but for all of our citizens that benefit from these types of programs. I will very briefly state and let Commissioner Pinter also speak here in just a moment. It was really the passing of HR One that we find ourselves in this position. So that is also known as the one big beautiful bill. And this Board of County Commissioners has been very solution-oriented, very community collaborative, and we want to build partnerships. We have not called from the dais in my time of being a county commissioner, which is nearly going on my fifth year, of bringing politics, bringing partisan politics, calling out other elected officials, whether it's states, local, or federal. We have always taken care of our own Adams County. As a longtime resident, my grandfather being a farmer and an immigrant from the Philippine Islands, we've taken care of our own. It is the grit of Adams County that makes us who we are. The passing of HR One has put us in a position as a nation, as a country, as a county, that we no longer have these safety nets available for our residents. There's been many asks and requests on the general fund dollars. At the state level in 2024, also an important cause at the time, still a very important cause, property tax was reduced, and so property taxes in Adams County was reduced to support our residents twice. Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. So to sum up my comments is that I've seen this board. We've talked about not only TANF, we've talked about general fund dollars. We talked about how do we support residents in the absence of federal dollars? It is not trickling down, it is cascading. It is a waterfall effect. And the people at the end of that chain are our residents, are us in community that are here as nonprofits, here as government, to hold people together and to hold people up. This is one thing. As a county commissioner, if people were to ask me what keeps me up at night, it's the funding that is no longer there. It is our actions as individual residents to go to the ballot box, to vote your values, to vote what you believe is a solution for your community. We will continue as the Board of County Commissioners to work the problem, to find solutions, to support our residents. I've seen this board in times of grit, in times of emotion when discussing this, in times of need of how do we support? We're working through all of those. The TANF discussion, we are discussing that this afternoon in our study session. As soon as we finish this conclusion of this meeting, we'll go upstairs. It's scheduled for later this afternoon. It is top of mind for all of us of what can we do for housing, what can we do for food assistance, what can we do for the cutback on Medicaid, what does administrative services look like that are now required from the federal government to the county level when it comes to Medicaid programs? So with that, this is what keeps me up at night. I appreciate all of you being here and articulating the needs of your clients, the needs of your organization. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Pinter.
Yes, really truly thank you all for coming out today. And just to concur and add to what my colleague Commissioner Baca said, your organizations, both Growing Home and Almost Home, and the residents who have come out in support of trying to have better funding opportunities have made a huge impact on us and on me personally. You know, you're talking about having dialogue, you're talking about coming to events. I have made it a point throughout my career to come to events at both your organizations, and I will share a quick epiphany that I had my first year as an elected official. In 2014, I was at a Growing Home event and very new, very excited, very overwhelmed as an elected official, and we were at brunch lunch thing, and on the program on the back was a survey to do ACE scores and to tick off. I don't know if any of you have ever done that. You tick off the different adverse childhood experiences that are indicators of your future health and well-being. And I was like, you know, ticking along, and I was like, oh, it's seven. Well, depending on how you look at the situation, eight. And I'm just, as I'm concluding the quiz, your executive director at the time goes to the podium and says, oh, you've probably all completed the quiz. Most of you have one or two. Most of our residents have a seven or eight. And talking about how that score, those adverse childhood experiences, compounded in a way to affect future health outcomes and stabilities for those individuals and their families. And it was the first time I fully understood in a mathematical way the number of times our family had been so close to collapse. And it's been, it stuck with me all these years, over ten years later. We know what you're up against. We lobbied so hard that we were annoying when Governor Polis suggested that we should cut our property tax revenues, not once, but twice, and held a special section to cut them. We lobbied so much and so persistently. We were literally on a Zoom with Congressman Gabe Evans, July 2nd, begging him to make changes to HR One. For our human services team, eighty percent of their funding is federal pass-through. And so these cuts are going to be dramatic to our social workers upon whom you all rely as well. We really don't know what we're going to do. We're so grateful for them and that they're called into the service, but they deserve a positive working environment. And the clients who come into human services deserve access to care as well, as well as our partner organizations. We are very stressed about how to respond while USDA funding is being cut so our food pantries have less, while Department of Education funding is being cut so that our schools have less, while human services funding is projected in the president's current budget to be cut by almost half. So like, I just don't know. We are going to do our best. You are absolutely right. We are looking at the passage of HR One, which I will tell you, Gabe Evans and Lauren Boebert voted for in Congress, sixty-two thousand Adams County residents losing their healthcare coverage, and seven thousand children and families losing SNAP coverage. We are looking at catastrophic harm. And we appreciate and take your invitation for collaboration. We take your stories to heart. And we're going to have a robust conversation during our study session, which will be on YouTube if anyone can't stay and wants to watch. This will be one of many conversations. There is another study session, I apologize, another special session called by the governor for the end of August. A couple of us, Commissioner Odoricio, Commissioner Malika, and I had the opportunity to go to County Commissioner Conference and speak directly with JBC members, Senator Jeff Bridges, and Speaker Julie McCloskey, and asked them directly basically these same questions. And we were just told, no, there are no options. There's no investment now to make the future better. And we're looking at one point two billion dollars of additional cuts from the state. Your stories are so impactful and are just the first stories we're hearing of the cascading harm that my colleague Chair Baca mentioned. We're taking them to heart. We're going to do our best. And I want to thank each and every one of you who took time to come today. It truly matters. Your voices matter and your stories matter, and I am so grateful for the work you're doing to invest back in your community, and we're going to do our best.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Malika?
I'll be brief. Really, thank you all for coming today and speaking out. I think it's really important that we saw and we heard your stories today. The work you do, the on-the-ground work you do for our residents every single day is something that is truly amazing and something that we don't forget. So, thank you for sharing your stories. Those stories, I'm going to share with others, especially our Adams County Legislative group as they go down to special session here in just a little bit. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to say thank you to the folks who came today. You've been partners with us for many years, and when looking at the history, we've been working on these things together, and we specifically chose, rather than investing in some other things in our ARPA, to put it back out in the community, and you helped deliver. And I know we have a history of working together. We're going to do the best we can with limiting resources to continue the effort together. But we're in a situation that we haven't been in in a while, and I appreciate all of you coming out and sharing these stories. Thank you.
Thank you to my board. We're going to move on to the next item in our, and thank you to all that were here to speak under public comment. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. And that motion passes four to zero with one absent.
So the next item on our agenda is County Manager. So Dion.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have two items of new business today. The first is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Art Craft Sign Company in the amount of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand forty-one dollars for the Riverdale Regional Park Wayfinding Signage Project, and Cindy Stringham from Parks and Open Space will present that item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Stringham, Manager, Planning, Design, and Construction with Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts. On April twenty-second of this year in public hearing, the board approved the second phase of the Wayfinding Signage Project, which adds identification and directional wayfinding signage on the Clear Creek Trail, Little Dry Creek Trail, Niver Creek Trail, and the South Platte Trail across all of Adams County. To date, one hundred and forty-four of the total one hundred and ninety-eight signs have been installed. This includes eight park ID signs with three more in fabrication. The third phase of the Wayfinding Signage Project covers the Riverdale Regional Park, which incorporates similar design features and includes directional wayfinding for parking, the facilities and event centers, and traffic within the fairgrounds, both vehicle and pedestrian. A request for proposal was solicited in June for the fabrication and installation of this scope of the project. Ten firms submitted proposals, and after the evaluation process, it was determined that Art Craft Sign Company will provide the best overall value for the county. The proposed fees are within the approved project budget in the Open Space Fund, and the timeframe for this phase will be coordinated to have the signs installed by the completion of the Riverdale Regional Park Improvements Project. Therefore, it is recommended to approve an agreement for the Riverdale Regional Park Wayfinding Signage with Art Craft Sign Company in the amount of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand and forty-one dollars. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
No. If there are no questions, I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
And the motion passes four to zero with one absent. Thank you so much, Cindy. Dion?
Thank you. Our second item is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Maple Star Doing Business as Claire Vida Incorporated in the amount of two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for diligent search services. Carrie Daggett from Human Services will present the slide.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carrie Daggett. I'm the Director for Child Adult and Family Services Division for the Adams County Human Services Department. And today I'm requesting approval to enter into an agreement with Claire Vida, who is doing business as Maple Star, for diligent search services for our Child Adult and Family Services Division. This agreement request is for five years with a total not to exceed an annual amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, making the total amount of this agreement two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A new request for a proposal for these services was issued in April twenty twenty-five. Claire Vida was the only provider to submit a proposal. They were selected through our child welfare RFP evaluation process. Diligent search is the timely good faith effort to locate and contact any non-custodial parent, all grandparents, and any other adult relatives concerning the removal of a child or youth from the custodial home. Diligent search extends beyond the United States as appropriate. Diligent search is also required by our child welfare rules and regulations. We have contracted with Claire Vida for diligent search services since two thousand nineteen. Over the last contract term, Claire Vida provided approximately thirty-one thousand hours of service, including over six thousand hours in the last year alone. Under this proposed agreement, we expect Claire Vida to provide up to sixty-three hours of service annually. Claire Vida attends all of our court hearings in person and completes and files the required relative affidavit. They also do initial diligent search referrals for in-home cases and kinship placements. This agreement will be paid for with the child welfare allocation Adams County receives annually. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes, I have a question. Typically, and I'm going to ask, this might be a legal question, but typically we do a three-year contract with most of our vendors and then with a renewal option up to three years and then to recompete. Why are we doing five years here? And that might be a lawyer question? I'm not sure.
Sure, thank you for the question. I can answer, and then if there's anything else...
Sure. Thank you for the question. I can answer and then if there's anything else. So we do, this is a, it is a five-year contract. We do a one-year agreement with an option to renew over four times over four years. And primarily, we execute the five-year contract so that we can ensure services remain in place over the course of that time and to ensure continuity.
Yeah, and I would just add that this is not unusual. Human services contracts are often on a little bit of a different timeline than your typical service provider contract, like for a project. So this is very typical in our human services world and it is consistent with our purchasing policies.
Thank you.
So the question, I'm so sorry if you included this in your presentation. So the two point two five million dollars for diligent search services, is that over a five-year period? That's?
Yes, that is correct. So it would not exceed an annual amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year.
Okay. Thank you for that. So today we're approving the full five years? Is, is that?
Yes, that is the request for the, the one-year, the one-year contract with the option to renew over the four years for the total amount of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And again, this is fairly typical. We usually bring, we want to bring the full amount as if the contract really were extended for all five years. Right? Because your approval today will give staff the authority to keep approving those year after year till we get to the five years. We won't come back to the board at year two, three, four. And so we generally do ask for approval for the entire timeframe upfront. But then human services obviously would have the option if after a year, say, service is not being provided as we expected or we're having trouble with the vendor, then we would not renew.
That's really interesting. Commissioner Odoricio, then Mullaka.
So how do you guys determine, and, and, and there's a little bit more questions sometimes when we only have one applicant? And we're doing five years now. I, I apologize for missing some of that on the, I guess we're just all a little bit more cautious these days with everything, given the budget issues that we're having. But what is the criteria we use to determine whether we want to end a contract early or go out for a recompete before that five years is up?
Sure. Thank you for the question. There are a couple of different ways that we can ensure quality. One of those ways is that we have the state continuously auditing our work in child welfare. And so we get reports on it, usually an annual, sometimes more than that basis of whether or not we are actually meeting and or exceeding this requirement. We also have, we, we bill the provider after they have provided the services or the provider bills us after the services have been provided. So that's another way we can ensure that we have received the service. We are also held accountable to this requirement by our court. And so the court will usually routinely asks if this, and is aware of whether or not the affidavits are being filed and the service is being provided.
Very good. Thank you very much. The only other question I would have is as we go through this, how are other counties, do other counties also use Maple Star? Like Jefferson, Arapahoe, Boulder, or do they do it in-house?
They, thank you for the question. They do both. So some of the, the work is done internally and then some of the work is contracted out.
And is Maple Star the only outside contractor in those other as well?
Yes.
That helps me understand the market. Thank you very much. Great answers, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. So my question is regarding the annual reports that the state audits, you know, this team and, and the work that you guys do. I haven't seen those reports before. So are we currently in compliance? Is there anything, any issues? Since we've been working with this contractor since twenty nineteen, I am just curious if there have been any issues with this particular contractor? Are we meeting all the requirements as prescribed?
Yes, thank you for the question. We perform very well in this measure in our audits. And so that helps us to understand that the work that this contractor is doing is supporting the requirements that we have for diligent search. So we do perform very well according to our state audits in this area.
Okay. And then I'll just make a note to staff, seeing audits like that, I think could also help this board understand where that accountability is and where it lies so that we could also review that information when large contracts like this move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
Where, where are those audit stories?
The audit report, state audit report.
Sure. We receive those from our Administrative Review Division from the Colorado Department of Human Services. They provide those to us in writing.
And then do we post those on the web?
They are, they are not posted on our, our website. I'm not sure if they're posted on the Colorado Department of Human Services website.
We can, we can follow up on this. We're asking a lot of these same questions to everyone. I promise we're not just picking on you. I swear. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Not seen. And then we just need a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve as presented.
Second. The motion passes four to zero with one absent. Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is the County Attorney.
Good morning, Commissioner Sally Daggett from the County Attorney's Office. And you have before you agenda item relating to first reading of the Adams County Massage Facility Licensing Ordinance. And pleased to give a little bit of an overview where we are. There was legislation in twenty twenty-four that required all local governments to start doing background checks on massage facility employees effective October one, twenty twenty-four. Adduced to some issues with the use of the background check system. There were some amendments made to that legislation this current legislative session in twenty twenty-five. So that bumped back the deadline for these required background checks from October first, twenty twenty-four to July first, twenty twenty-six. So you were supposed to hear first reading on this proposed licensing ordinance in May, but we bumped it to today. So we could make some updates to the draft of the licensing ordinance. We've done a bunch of outreach with other municipalities as where we're required to in the twenty twenty-four legislations. We've done that. We've done outreach to municipal clerks, municipal attorneys. We've also done two separate mailings to who we think are the fifteen or so massage facilities in unincorporated Adams County. So we've done all that and gotten some feedback from folks on that. And what's before you today is a positive first reading. Will then be a required newspaper notice and second reading is proposed for September ninth of twenty twenty-five. And the ordinance, if it is approved, will become effective November first, twenty twenty-five. And we would start requiring licenses of massage facilities as of March first, twenty twenty-six. And then we would require background checks on all employees of massage facilities. It's employees, operators, and owners. It's not just employees. But that deadline for the background checks for employees, operators, and owners would be July first, twenty twenty-six. And I'm pleased to answer any questions you might have about the ordinance. Thank you.
Great questions from the board for the attorney.
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions and I believe we don't take an action today. This is just a notification. And so is this something where we ask the public?
Certainly, I think it would be appropriate to ask if there is anyone here to speak to it, but yes, no action required today.
With that, I would just like to say thank you to staff for working on this. We appreciate it. This is, this is in an effort to address human trafficking. And, and address some of the other challenges that we've had in these communities. And with Adams County being identified as an area of significant concern in this area, I appreciate the support from the county commissioners and staff working together on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item under first reading? See a lot of staff members and our land use hearing applicants here. Okay. So no action today required by the board and then it comes back on September sixteenth?
September ninth for second reading.
September ninth. Okay. Looking forward to your presentation then. Okay. Next item on our agenda is land use. Does staff need just a minute to set up? Okay. Time is eleven eighteen. Why don't we come back in about five minutes? So eleven twenty-three. Okay, you're ready? All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good afternoon. Brian Marin with Community and Economic Development Department. And this afternoon I will be presenting case P U D twenty twenty-three dash two, the Van Pelt Plan Unit Development Amendment Number Two, located at a property in forty-three hundred Hudson Road. Their question in front of you this afternoon is a major amendment to the final development plan of the Van Pelt Plan Unit Development to allow additional uses and designate an area for outdoor storage within Lot One. It's important to know that this case has had six continuance in the last years, with the last one taking place on July fifteen, in which the Commissioners formally requested a continuance of the case to address outdoor storage language on the proposed amendment. Subject property is in central Adams County, southeast of Denver International Airport, and is about thirty-five point one acres. Please note that although there are two properties that encompass this P U D area, the proposed amendment to the P U D will only affect northern lot. And no changes are being proposed to the southern lot at this time. The current zoning of the subject property is P U D, which encourages the development of land as a single unit and allows greater flexibility in the design of our development and uses allowed on the site. The future land use of the subject property is green energy and sustainable agriculture, which according to the Colorado Spaceport Subarea Plan or CASP, focuses on providing space for solar farms and other forms of renewable energy and higher intensity agricultural uses. It's important to note that although the surrounding properties to the site are currently agricultural or vacant, they're under the jurisdiction of the city of Aurora and their current zoning designation is Airport District, which allows a variety of commercial, light manufacturing, and distribution uses to occur on the site. As we can see from the site photos, the area surrounding the property is rural in nature. And while some of the sites are vacant, there are some residential and industrial uses to include trucking operations and solar energy systems throughout the area. To better understand the current amendment proposal, it's best to understand how we got here in the first place. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, the subject property was rezoned into a P U D via case two hundred and four dash ninety-seven dash P U D, which allowed the site to have industrial uses conducive of the I-1 zoning designation such as warehousing and distribution of animal feed and pet foods to be established on the site. Additionally, the P U D allowed the applicant at the time to keep their residential home on the site. Additionally, the P U D allowed the applicant at the time to keep their residential home on the site. In two thousand, the subject property was subdivided into two lots for case P R J uh two thousand dash fifty-four. The subdivision created two lots with northern lot being thirty-five acres and the southern lot twenty-eight acres. No other changes to the original uses were proposed at that time. And then the last major entitlement to the P U D was made back in two thousand and seven in the form of the first major amendment via case P U D two thousand and seven dash seven, which delineated uh uses to both lot one and two. As part of the changes to lot one, the amendment will allow a mobile home to be used as a farm employee dwelling and all other uses on lot one remain. The uses allowed on lot two were heavy equipment operation school with associated office shop and storage yard. Outside storage up to a hundred percent of the building area and a warehouse and animal and pet food distribution. When considering a major amendment to our plan unit development, the commission needs to consider the following criteria of approval. That the proposal meets conformity with the county's comprehensive plan and any applicable area plan. That the proposal meets conformance with P U D standards and that is consistent with any previous approvals of the property. And that any construction plans adhere to the standards and regulations of the county code and any of our referral agencies. As I mentioned previously, this proposed major amendment will only change the current uses of lot one. There are no proposed use changes to lot two. The changes being proposed as part of this P U D include outdoor storage for up to fifteen acres. Warehouse and distribution uses, office space. Heavy equipment and operations school with uh the associated um storage yard and solar energy systems at a small scale. Now for the applicant to establish each of the uh proposed new uses on the site, a change in use will be required to properly review that the site meets compliance with all design and engineering regulations to include setbacks, landscaping, drainage and site improvements as needed. Additionally, uh at this time, this proposal meets each criterion each criterion of the approval for major P U D amendments in the following manner. Number one, consistency with adopted plans. The proposal incorporates a small-scale solar energy system consistent with the Colorado Air and Space Port Subarea Plan, Green Energy and Sustainability Agricultural Land Use Designation. While other proposed uses such as outdoor storage, warehousing and distribution may not directly align with the subarea plan, they are consistent with the city of Aurora vision for the area to be industrial in nature, given that the property is surrounded by land already annexed by the city of Aurora as shown in previous slides. Number two, compatibility with surrounding uses. The proposed uses on lot one are compatible with the surrounding land uses, which are predominantly industrial. These uses are also the same as those approved for lot two of the overall P U D, which further maintains compatibility with the development uh and with the surrounding area. Number three, compliance with zoning and development standards. The proposed amendment will continue to meet uh the applicable zoning and development standards established per the P U D, including setbacks, screening, stormwater management and all other requirements associated with our land use development plan. The standards will be reviewed through the change in use process to ensure every requirement is met before a proposed use begins operating on the site. And number four, ability to uh meet performance and engineering requirements. While the applicant has not formally submitted construction plans with this proposal at this time, any new use on the property will require a formal change in use application. This process will ensure compliance with all performance standards and engineering requirements, including traffic impacts and drainage improvements. Here's the site plan for the proposed uh changes to the P U D uh in lot one. I'd like to point out that since the last hearing, the commissioners formally requested that the applicant and her staff work together to address concerns related to outdoor storage on the site. As a result, this amendment now includes the specific standards for outdoor storage on lot one. First, the storage of inoperable vehicles is prohibited and the term inoperable is clearly defined to ensure clarity and enforcement. Second, unlicensed or unregistered vehicles are also prohibited. And finally, if lot one is used for outdoor storage, that area will be subject to inspection by county staff during normal business hours. These requirements are intended to improve compatibility with the surrounding uses and to address previous concerns related to co-compliance on the site. As part of this entitlement process, a public notice and request for comments was sent to seventeen residents and property owners within a mile of the subject property. This distance was was needed as there are many large properties throughout this area of the county. Only one public comment was provided via phone conversation stated appreciation for the fact that the applicant was going through the proper channels to allow uh the proposed uses on the property. Uh none of their referral agencies responded with concerns for this proposal. This case was heard uh by the planning commission back uh and on January nine, twenty twenty-five. Uh during that hearing, the commissioners uh requested an update from co-compliance related to previous violations that were taking place on the site. At that time, staff noted that violations on the site were still unresolved, uh even after uh the applicant requested two sixty-day continuance. Uh at that time, the commissioners expressed concern over the violations and lack of progress on the site. And due to these concerns, the commissioners at that time voted six to one to recommend denial of the entitlement request. However, given the current conditions of the site, as well as the proposed site plan for the site and revised language in the P U D documents, staff has been able to determine the following. The proposed amendment meets conformity with both the Advance and Adams Comprehensive Plan and the CASP Subarea Plan. The proposed plan conforms with all P U D standards and is consistent with previous approvals on the site. And at the time that the new use established on the site, a change in use will be required in order to review all proposed improvements to the site. Therefore, staff recommends approval of P U D um twenty twenty-three dash two with two conditions and one findings of fact. Here are the findings of fact for this case. And I'll just quickly touch on the conditions of approval. The applicant shall provide uh copies of the commercial well issued by the Colorado Division of Water Resources in order to turn the single family dwelling into commercial office space. And the applicant shall also obtain a building permit to convert the family dwelling into uh commercial office space. And I would just like to point out that uh even though if if this P U D were to be approved today, that does not change the fact that the applicant will still need to go through the formal process of a change in use to review all uh all aspects related to the development on the site. With that, I complete my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you so much. Questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Odoricio.
Can you go back to the criteria again? Tell me, you you were saying that uh or actually, can you show us how much where the uh solar is gonna be on the map? And is it already there?
It is not. The applicant at this time has not let uh stated a specific space for that.
So where is it gonna go?
Uh I can let the applicant provide that answer for you, Commissioner.
The reason I ask is because that's the criteria that we're relying on to have it be compatible with the comp plan. And so I'll ask the uh heads up to the applicant I'll ask for that because it's something that uh we're just trying to look at the criteria and we're having these conversations not about this case, but overall how to apply the criteria to a particular case and I've been instructed to ask the questions on the record, so that's what I'm trying to do.
Understood.
So, thank you very much.
I just had one question.
Yeah, I have a question. You go and then I come.
Can you just go back to the um it looks like slide maybe ten? I'm looking for the Aurora. Aurora is bookends each side. That's the slide.
Yes.
Aurora zoning.
Airport district.
Airport district.
Yes, which allows, as I mentioned, commercial and some industrial and warehousing uh uses per city of Aurora code development.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Commissioner Pinter.
Yes, thank you. I had a similar question. Um I understand in theory how while we don't obviously have any jur jurisdiction of how Aurora does their zoning of their plans, how uh the uses here would be consistent with an airport district. I think I would like to hear you articulate how this is consistent with the CASP Subarea Plan. Because you just said briefly, this is consistent with the CASP Subarea Plan. And I just would like you to define that and articulate what the consistencies are that you observe.
Yeah, so uh as I mentioned, um the the CASP does um laid out that there is um uh a focus on um green energy and sustainable agriculture. Well, it might not look like that in the picture. Uh just south of this property, Commissioner, there's actually an Excel um uh solar farm that actually acts uh even though it's sewn as zoning um Airport District by the city of Aurora still allows for that type of uh use, which is consistent with both the CASP plant as well as what the city of Aurora is currently doing around the area, Commissioner.
I just wanna make sure I understand. You referenced the parcel below this one being consistent, but help me understand how this parcel and these uses are consistent with the CASP Subarea Plan.
Of course. Give me just one.
So maybe I I can help just a little bit and I I don't know that this proposal is in exact alignment. Um I think that the previous uh uses that were permitted, like uh warehouse and animal pet food distribution um are are less in alignment and uh allowing for um solar development as well as outdoor storage type uses would be uh more in alignment with the Subarea Plan. I again, maybe not a perfect fit, but better than it currently is today.
That is helpful and just know that this is something that's up for me and probably my colleagues in thinking about the use of this parcel. Thank you. Yes, another colleague does.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else for staff? Not at the moment. So we'll hear from the applicant next. Still morning. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
That. Now can you hear me? You can you could hear me before. Maybe I'll just turn it off.
Your all of your fans on YouTube can now hear you as well.
Oh.
You could turn it on or you could reboot.
Okay. Fans on YouTube, I don't even know how to respond to that. Um uh it it does feel a little bit like Groundhog Day uh with this application, so I want to uh thank first of all, I want to thank staff um for working so diligently and uh thank um the county attorney's office as well for working with us um after our hearing on July fifteenth to work through some language as you directed. Um your questions today are a little bit different uh than the questions that you had uh for us last month, but that's uh that's your prerogative and so we'll we'll go with it. Um you know, we are uh obviously at this point seeking um to rezone uh this one lot, which is more consistent with the other lot. And and as we discussed last month, who knows why both of the lots were not rezoned together back in two thousand and seven? It is what it is. Um but in looking at the existing plans, uh there has been some focus on what is known as this green energy and sustainable agricultural sub area. And um I I just wanna make sure that everybody has the same um sheet that I do. Um I don't know if this is page thirty-three or not from that Subarea Plan. I have some reference to page thirty-three uh of the Subarea Plan, but there are primary land uses and there are supporting land uses. And what we're also um hoping to achieve is um you know, Commissioner Odoricio, we don't have a uh proposed uh solar farm at this point, but you know, so much of land use and and entitlements is prospective in nature um with a desire to place certain uses on the site. So I would I would say that when you look at the primary land uses and the supporting land uses, these are consistent um with what we're endeavoring uh to do at this particular facility, uh this particular property. The problem is, is we some sometimes in this particular instance, because it's been in front of you so many times, you're you're probably thinking about how are we aligning the existing use with the new entitlement. And I'm not entirely sure that's the right way to think of a land use entitlement because we're thinking prospectively um in terms of how to align. And so, all of that being said, we are consistent. Um if not exactly on all fours, maybe on three uh as relates to this Subarea Plan. Um what I further wanted to uh mention this morning, uh because I thought this mostly was gonna be the nature of today's hearing was to bring you up to speed on what has happened uh since uh we last met. Um as you'll remember, we had um identified that we had just recently gotten a uh uh order of possession uh for one of the properties that has been really the focal point. Uh I think you may remember that even those tenants showed up uh pretty afraid about what would happen. We were hopeful that as a result of uh the fifteenth of July, they were gonna run back immediately. In fact, they were on the site that morning cleaning up and we thought that they would work really diligently to do that. Unfortunately, um the entire property has not been cleaned to the level that we would like. Um so we have now had to move into our next phase, which is to uh get a writ of restitution uh through the district court, which would ultimately give us the power to work with the sheriffs and remove property. Nobody wants to do this. Uh it's 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 just so terrible uh to have to use um those services in order to remove people and property from um you know, from this site, but that is where we are. Um and again, I just wanted to make sure that the case number was in the record because part of what I feel like we've been trying to um share with you all as we've come back is just really our due diligence and our good faith in trying to do what's right. Um so it's case number twenty twenty-five C V zero three zero four zero zero. And you can see if you pull that up, um if you have access to the court system, that we have filed for that writ of restitution. So once we have that in place, we'll be uh forcibly removing uh the the rest of the uh the property. And I have to say this, um your your um code enforcement folks who are all back there. Uh we've uh appreciated working with them. I hope they've appreciated that we have been as uh forthright and as diligent as we have been. We gave them access uh to the site, which uh they asked for and they were on site yesterday and it wasn't what we wanted it to be. Um and so again, I I just appreciate what they do and um we may even use some of the the photos that were taken yesterday to supplement uh the record with the district court. All of that being said, we've worked with the county attorneys. We believe that we have the right conditions placed on the outdoor storage parcel, which was of utmost concern to you last month. And we're ready um hopefully for your approval today uh on this rezoning, uh on this entitlement and um we'll be here to answer any additional questions you might have.
Great, thank you to the applicant. Um Commissioner Odoricio is first.
Alright, um did we, where are the photos that you said?
Well, your uh code compliance has photos.
Okay, they're not already in the record yet.
They're not. I don't think so. I don't know why they would be.
I will ask staff, are these in the record yet?
We do have them available for you.
Uh maybe we can have somebody come up rather than talk. Is that okay? Um just to for the sake of transparency in the record. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Commissioner Scale Moon with Code Compliance Supervisor. The photos that are on record right now are dated Friday. We did also go yesterday. Um Friday's pictures were taken from the right of way because we did not have access to the property on that date. However, working with the attorney um and the owner, they allowed us access yesterday. So the photos you're looking at are from the street, very difficult to see some things, but you can see things. But the photos we took yesterday are not on the record yet.
You have them?
I have them with me, yes.
Do you feel like that they made progress in three days?
I'm sorry?
Was there progress made in three days?
It's difficult to tell from the right of way what's behind some of the screen fencing or some of the weeds that have grown up. Um but I will say, yes, there has been progress made at the property. I will say, yes, there has been progress made at the property. I would not say there has been significant progress made. And I think the attorneys and the owner acknowledge that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I I I appreciate that and I appreciate you sharing photos and I really appreciate uh the landowner granting access to code enforcement. Would you agree with the attorney's suggestion that unfortunately um an eviction and writ of removal is the next step?
I mean, I can't speak for them as to what they should do, but i- if that's the only way to remove the tenant that is in violation, then. I think they should exercise all of their rights to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Odoricio.
So to follow up, I I just wanna clarify, maybe it's uh uh thank you very much. I'm gonna ask this of the um Mister Foster. The folks in the photos, uh are these the folks that are gonna be uh are part of the eviction? Are these the or is it a different party?
Yeah, no, the the lion's share of the um. The uh property on the site that needs to be removed is from this particular case.
Okay, so the ones that we're seeing are from that case, so.
I don't, that that I think is by the shed. I don't think that is, I don't think that is from. That's not from his, no, that isn't. That's that's on a different property.
I'm sorry, what do you?
That's on a different part of our property. That is not the part that is being, that we are seeking a writ of.
The photo with the tree.
Right, right by.
I'm trying to give benefit of the doubt that some of these are gonna be taken care of in the uh civil process. And so some of these, it sounds like, are not part of that civil process. So I'm trying to figure out how I could get assurances that things are gonna get cleaned up.
Yeah, because we're working on it. I mean, I I we keep showing up, we we keep.
Oh, I have no question about the intentions of you and the applicant at this point. We're just trying to help.
That's all, that's all you got. I mean, um you've you've got our good faith and our ongoing efforts and our work with the district court. I mean, I I there is nothing else I can do.
I totally understand. Well, I mean, after this, if. It's a violation of code.
It is.
And we've held on to that. And so for me to to explain to the public if we proceed today and approve something like this. The answer is, did you, did the county commissioners look the other way or stick our head in the sand? And the answer is no. Because you're doing what you can with that civil case and then we could always reinitiate the code compliance case. For anything that's not addressed through that. Uh I see Gail Moon wanting to say something, but for me, I have to be able to explain to somebody. If we do approve based on the intentions and the actions so far, that I would be able to look at somebody in the eyes and say, yes, we still care about getting this. All cleaned up and it still could be addressed through the code compliance issue.
I have figured out an entitlement that gets me out of code compliance.
I am so glad you have not found such an entitlement.
I'm gonna keep looking.
Oh, I'm sure you are. Thank you. Uh Madam Chair, if we could have Gilman, it looks like she's trying to contribute to this portion of the conversation.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the commissioners that approving this um request does not close the code compliance case. And will not close the code compliance case. It will remain open while the violations exist. I just wanted that reminder.
Yeah, I I I'm gonna just say, and I know we still have to go to the public and there might be other questions, but I mean, I'm seeing good faith on part of the applicant. I'm seeing good faith on part of our staff. We've actually let this thing go on for a long time, but if we were to proceed today with an approval based on what we've seen. Um we still have the ability uh to reinitiate uh or continue the processes that. That's what I heard from Gil Moon and I see a nod from the attorney, so uh I don't have any further questions at this moment. Thank you.
Applicant, were you completed with your presentation? Okay, thank you so much. No additional questions from the commissioners or the applicant. All right, any members from the public that would like to speak to this item? I see a lot of staff here. Thank you to the staff for all being here. Um no members from the public, so it's to the Board of County Commissioners for discussion. Odoricio.
Madam Chair, in looking at this, uh I as I stated a couple of seconds ago, I do see that there is some good faith to address these issues. And I understand that we're supposed to separate. Code compliance from zoning in some way and separate history in some way from prospective. Uh use of of the property. I will say that um. I I do generally think that we have some work to do as a county and as a team together with our executive team. Um on cle- cleaning up some of our land use criteria. I think in this case, it's I can see us saying that with some of those as uh Mister Foster uh stated. Some of those secondary uses are those that will continue, such as light industrial office, things like that. I could see that uh meeting the criteria. A promise that someday we might get. Green industry there is somewhat of a stretch, but I think it still meets it at this point. I feel comfortable proceeding. Mostly because I know that the code compliance team will continue to reinitiate uh if we don't see some progress. I do wanna compliment the applicant for, I I do see some due diligence here. I do see us trying uh or him trying. Uh and I do see our staff working, but at some point, we've got to put the line in the sand and say it's gotta be cleaned up. And I am okay with that. I also know that sometimes providing a better use on the property. Will also push out some of the unwanted uses um and help with that. Uh because I can only imagine that lawyer's fees, it can get expensive and you need some help to be able to pay for those to get the people evicted, so. Those are some of my thoughts. I do have some concerns generally that I think that this case should have also maybe included a request to modify the comp plan. Uh to maybe move it to uh one of the other comp plan changes or um future land use zones. Not zones, I should say, future land use designation, because I do feel that that might have helped clarify some of the criteria issues that I. Still have a little bit with uh being in the um. In the green energy and sustainable agriculture, I think it could have been um for future discussion. Like either like a light industrial, industry hub um or one of those other light industrial ones. Even if it's the aerospace and innovation would have worked better, I think uh to make it more. I think to make it a little bit more clear. With that said, I I I feel comfortable proceeding today with those uh items that I mentioned, but. I would like for us to look long term at some of our criteria and I do think P U D makes sense here. And I do think in the future, if we could have started this all over, I would have recommended a comp plan amendment with it, but I do think that there's enough of a connection here. I feel comfortable to proceed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna hop in here and then there's other commissioners. Um so thank you to the applicant. We had a long morning this morning between presentations and. We had quite an extensive um public comment period uh this morning, so I'm gonna support this item today. Um it seems like a very short while ago, you were just here in front of us. I supported it then, I support it now. I do appreciate the applicant working with our staff, with the county attorney's office, um with our planning staff, taking under consideration. The direction that the board had at the time. The Colorado Air and Spaceport Subarea Plan is a a new wrinkle that I also heard today. Um it's a very important. Admity property for Adams County. Um that subarea plan, there was a lot of thought. You were in the planning business as well. Um of what can go there and I just feel like the P U D alongside the municipal um zoning. That this is gonna be the best opportunity, allows the most flexibility, which runs with the land for future uses. Um thank you for addressing the current state um and going through that process of the court system and. Um taking the additional actions that you know have to take. So I I appreciate that. That is above and beyond you. There was some things pre- stated on a previous slide um as far as access to staff. Regarding licensed vehicles, um access to the property itself, that is more than what is required. And I want to state that for the record and I appreciate your cooperation for that. Um. I have a lot of faith, you're right, it is good faith of getting that property from its current state to a usable state that is. Would be most attractive to you, um most attractive to a future tenant possibly. So I'm gonna support this item today. I feel like the applicant has, while the current state, there I see, I look at. This as two separate tracks. There is a current track with the land use, there is the ongoing effort of. Um the code enforcement, which is going to continue regardless of our actions today. Um so I'm assuming that we're gonna get to support today on this. Um probably stretching that and I don't wanna put words in my commissioner's mouths, but. Um I want to thank again the applicant for your due diligence and your efforts um to bring this up to. A state you you have skin in the game, you probably want a productive tenant there. Um the Colorado Air and Spaceport yet to be determined what future economic development looks like. Uh we are going through a due diligence on the Colorado Air and Spaceport with a P three um company and we'll know more in the future of. How maybe you can move towards the subarea plan um compliance and what that would look like, um including the green space and. Solar if that's possible. So with that, I'm gonna support. Are there any other commissioners? Uh Commissioner Molika and Pinter.
Yes, actually, my feedback for today is really to staff and regarding um. Our criteria for approval in our slide deck, I understand that a lot of your analysis is in the staff report, but especially when it comes to. The subarea plants and comprehensive plans, I think it would actually be beneficial for the board as well as the public to have more information about how you're meeting. Um these criteria. I know you were able to kind of pull together. An explanation about how this meets the CAS subarea plan, um but having that in writing for the public, I think could also be really helpful in your analysis, so. Um if that's something that we could have moving forward, I think that could be really helpful. Um other than that, I appreciate the applicant's due diligence and continuing to address code compliance. Thank you, code compliance for. Uh keeping on them and um also recognizing that approval today does not um close their code compliance. Um cases currently in place, so um that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, um I um agree with what's been said. I just wanted to chime in because there was a conversation with regard to subarea plan compliance. And comment from applicants council that that felt new information. I think that's in part because we had gotten to such a place. Where the not uh the code compliance issues were starting to be addressed and I know it's unfortunate, I've. Uh in my previous life, filed for evictions and I've defended against evictions and both are bad and I wish you a harmonious. Um process both with the court and then with the move out and I hope that this will be uh the the last time you have to do such a thing. With one of your tenants to be able to maintain good code compliance on your property and I know that's been a real challenge. So I hope this is the last time you have to do it. If we are actually at the conclusion of comments, I'd be happy to make the motion. Okay. All right, so is that the motion screen? There it is. Okay, I move to approve the Van Pelt Plan Unit Development Amendment Number Two, P U D twenty twenty three dash two. With four findings of fact, two conditions and one note.
And I'll second that. Commissioners can please vote? The motion passes four to zero with one absent. Thank you to the applicant for being here today. And with that, we are adjourned with no additional items on our agenda at twelve oh one P M.